Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral
Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral
Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral
Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral
Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral
Panahon na ang pagbabago Dahil sa'yo ay hindi nakainawan Tayo na magtulong-tulong Napakaunlari na maral Napakunla rin ang mahal natin baga
Panahon na ng pagbabago Ayos ang mga dapat ayusin Dapat lang maingtungkulin Ng bawat mga mayan dito sa atin
Pagbubago, pagbabago, pagpuno sa pag-asenso Mag-sikat ng mabuti at ng guminhaba tayo Agumalaki natin sa mundo at ipamalas Ang bagong Pilipino at bagong Pilipinas
Panahon na
Good morning po, Secretary. This session is called Order. We will have the National Anthem to be led by Wesleyan Kinyah and invocation and recitation of the Councilor's creed by Councilor Domingo Esedo. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Dear Lord, as we deliberate in today's session, give us the wisdom to overcome passion. Give us that understanding hard to throw away from prejudice. Give us the foresight to know what the future may devise. Give us the courage and strength to seek the truth in what is good. Give us the facility and a language that we may be understood. And finally, our Lord, make us worthy public servants of Ragay, our beloved hometown we deeply care for and highly honor. Amen. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. The Councilor's Creed. I am a Philippine Councilor, mandated by law to enact measures and ordinances that redound to the general welfare of my constituents in their pursuit for happiness, peace, and prosperity. I believe in public service above self as the guiding principle of my official acts. And as I trade the pathways of local legislation, may the Almighty guide my mind and heart. And I shall be true to my constituents and the Filipino people. So help me God. Vice Mayor's Creed, I am the Vice Mayor, and my covenant with my people is to devote myself to public service. By divine providence and by the will of the people, I am mandated to preside over the local legislature, that with integrity and statesmanship. I shall lead the local legislature to enact measures and ordinances for the common good and fulfill my people's aspirations for happiness, peace, and prosperity. May the Almighty God help me consecrate myself for the people I am called to serve. The Secretary is hereby declared to call the role.
Honorable Elmer A. Linao, Honorable Annabel R. Llabres, Honorable Domingo Esedo, Honorable Petronilo G. Mercado, Honorable Ricardo B. Aquino, Honorable Romano C. Sulit, Honorable Rodrick L. Sandagon, Honorable Julio A. Arro, Honorable Alan A. Angeles, Honorable Walter M. Ehe. There are nine councilors present and one absent.
With almost everyone in attendance, the court of Ms. R. Declae. The Chair of the Committee on Rules is recognized for the approval of the Order of Business.
Mr. Chair, I move to open the Order of Business for inclusion. Is there any inclusion in today's agenda?
Uh, wala namang inclusion.
So, since there's no inclusion in amendment, I move for the approval of the Order of Business, Mr. Chair.
There is a motion for approval of the Order of Business as well as the agenda. Any second, duly seconded, any objection, hearing none, the agenda as well as the Order of Business is approved. The Chair is also... may proceed to the consideration of the previous minutes.
Mr. Chair, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the 10th Regular Session dated September 8, 2025.
As well as the minutes of the August 23?
As well as the minutes of
August 23.
9th Regular Session.
There is a motion to dispense the reading. No objections.
Since there's no amendment.
The minutes, the reading of the minutes is dispensed.
So, since there's no amendment, I move for the adoption of the Yes, Chair.
There's a
Sir said.
Councilor Seda was recognized for the amendment. September?
September 8, 2025. Under page 11, Mr. Chairman, page 11, line 6, I would like to insert the phrase "But Egg", "But Egg", in the under blank, in the blank. You should read like this. Ang sabi ng intelligence community naalis na yun natin yung But Egg.
So, there is a blank space in between the Ah, okay, because the I think it is inaudible. So, the blank space is provided by Councilor Seda. It will be the word that will be inserted is "But Egg". So, is there any objection to the insertion to the amendment made by Councilor Seda, hearing none? The amendment of Councilor Seda is incorporated in the minutes. The final motion for approval?
Sir Chair, since after the amendment was stated, I move for the final Of the
Minutes. There is a motion for the adoption of the August 23 and September 8 minutes of the previous session as amended. Duly seconded, hearing no objection, the minutes of August 23 and September 8 sessions is hereby adopted. Next, Madam Secretary.
Next is for the Privilege Hour.
Anyone who would like avail of the Privilege Hour? Hearing none, the Privilege Hour is terminated.
Next is for the Question Hour.
Do we have a guest? This session with no guest, the Question Hour is terminated. Next.
Next item is reading and referral of proposed measures and communications under Resolutions or Denances for First Reading, Draft Resolution Number 043 Series of 2025, Resolution requesting the Philippine Coast Guard to establish a station at the vicinity of Ragay Bay, Barangay Lower Omen, this municipality to conduct fishery law enforcement function in order to assist the Municipal Fishery Law Enforcement Team or FLEET sponsored by Councilor Domingo Esedo.
Referred to the Committee on Fisheries. Next.
Next is Draft Ordinance Number 014 Series of 2025, an ordinance localizing the implementation of Republic Act Number 11960, otherwise known as the OTOP Philippines Act, in the municipality of Ragay Camarinesur appropriating funds therefore and for other purposes. Sponsor, Honorable Julio A. Arro. Co-sponsors, Honorable Romano C. Sulit, Honorable Llabres, Aquino, and Angeles.
Referred to the Committee on Trade and Industry. Next.
Next is for Communication and Information, Letter from General Manager Edna M. Valerio Casoreco One, dated September 5, 2025, to Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Presiding Officer Sanggunyang Bayan, subject ERC Case Number 2025-103, ERC Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative Incorporated and Masinlok Power Corporation Limited, Joint Application for the Approval of the Power Supply Agreement between Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative and Masinlok Power Corporation with Motion for Confidential Treatment of Information and Motion for Provisional Authority of Interim Relief.
For information purposes only, but special attention to the Committee on Public Utilities. Next.
Next is the 2024 Annual Report of Camarinesur One Electric Cooperative Incorporated.
Same for information purposes only.
Next item is for a letter from Municipal Mayor Benji G. Horebata dated September 10, 2025, to the honorable members of the Sanggunyang Ragay Camarinesur through Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Vice Mayor Presiding Officer, subject Draft Memorandum of Agreement Relative to the Proposed Partnership between RDH and LG Ragay for the Proper Collection and Management of Residual or Non-Hazardous Waste Generated by the Former.
Referred to the Committee on Health and Good Governance.
Next is another letter from Engineer Lorrian A. Tariman, MPDC, CSO Focal Person, dated September 11, 2025, to the honorable members of the Sanggunyang Bayan through Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Vice Mayor Presiding Officer, subject Complete Set of Requirements for Accreditation of Haggrazers Association of Ragay or Horagon.
Referred to the Committee on CSOS POs. Next.
Next is DILG Memorandum Circular Number 2025-077, dated August 1, 2025, to all provincial governors, city and municipal mayors, Punong barangays, DILG regional directors, and others concerned. Subject is the Second Local Climate and Disaster Resilience Conference.
For information purposes only. Next.
Next is a letter from Engineer Tariman, CSO Focal Person, dated September 12, 2025, to the honorable members of the SB through Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Vice Mayor Presiding Officer, subject Complete Set of Requirements for Accreditation of the Following Organizations: Pambansang Koalisyon ng Kababaihan sa Kanayunan, Second, Samahang Bagotayokluhong, Next, Ragay Coco Central, Next, Negroes Women for Tomorrow Foundation. Yes, that's all, Mr. Chair.
All accreditation applications are referred to the Committee on CSOS POs. Next.
Next is a letter from Municipal Mayor Benji G. Horebata dated September 8, 2025, to the honorable members of the Sanggunyang Bayan through Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Vice Mayor Presiding Officer, subject Draft Data Turnover Agreement or DTA between the Philippine Statistics Authority and the Local Government Unit of Ragay for Authorization of the Local Chief Executive to enter into the subject DTA.
Referred to the Committee on Good Governance. Next.
Next is a letter from the mayor dated September 11 to the honorable members of SB through Honorable Anita request for authority to purchase four units brand-new utility van for the Office of the Municipal Health Officer, Office of the Municipal Social Welfare and Development Officer, Bureau of Fire Protection and the MDRRO, and another one-unit brand-new utility van for various offices of the LG Ragay.
Referred to the Committee on Finance and Appropriations and Good Government. Next.
Next is a letter from Erlinda P. Karingal, Principal of Don Gonzalbo Memorial High School, dated September 12, 2025, to the honorable members of the SB through Honorable Giovanni A. Senior Vice Mayor, subject Invitation to the Official Launching of the Senior High School Alternative Learning System Program at Don Marian Gonzalbo Memorial High School on September 30, 2025.
Referred to the Committee on Education. Next.
Next is a review of Barangay Resolutions or Denances Annual Supplemental Budget Development Plan, Committee Reports. First is the Joint Committee Report of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure and Committee on Finance and Appropriations for Barangay Resolution Number 13 Series of 2025, Resolution na naghihiling kay Honorable Benji G. Horebata, Municipal Mayor ng Ragay Camarinesur na maglaan ng budget ng munisipyo at pagpapagawa ng malaking kanal mula Kanagnagan Creek hanggang Zone 1B, Liboro Ragay Camarinesur.
The Chair of the Committee is recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and these August members. So, this is a Joint Committee Report, Committee on Public Works and Infra and Committee on Finance and Approve. Subject Barangay Resolution Number 13 Series of 2025, Resolution na naghihiling kay Honorable Benji Linoga Horebata, Municipal Mayor ng Ragay Camarinesur na mahalaanan ang budget ng munisipyo at pagpapagawa ng malaking kanal mula sa Kanagnagan Creek hanggang Zone 1B, Liboro Ragay Camarinesur. Barangay Resolution Number 32 Series of 2025, Resolution requesting Municipal Government of Ragay Camarinesur through Honorable Mayor Municipal Mayor and SB for the Conquiting of the Road from Sitio Batu-Sitio Mahinta Ragay, Barangay Go de Frederrey, Senior Ragay Camarinesur. Findings that Section 17 of the Local Government Code of 1991, Republic Act 7160 explicitly state of the revoked power, service, and facilities to the municipality, the construction of municipal roads and other facilities. That municipal budget on infrastructures has limited funds to accommodate construction project success requested by all barangays. That barangay councils also passed resolution requesting funding of the said barangay construction project to Congressman Chiuzy Anthony G. Horebata, President of the Camarinesur Representative. Recommendation, the committee find the above mentioned resolution meritorious and therefore recommended to avoid double funding of the barangay construction projects that will be endorsed to Congressman Chiuzy Anthony G. Horebata of the President of the Camarinesur. So, this resolution instead of
Adoption.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of this Committee Report.
There is a motion for the adoption of the Committee Report. Hearing no objection, the Committee Report is adopted. Next.
Next is a Committee Report on Manpower Development, Livelihood, NGOs, POs, and Cooperative for the Application for Accreditation of the following CSO Organizations: Katabangan Nagrayan Reform Cooperative, San Isidro Development Cooperative, or Sideko, Samahan ng Basketball Referees ng Pilipinas Incorporated, Ragay Elite Referees Association, Karagatan Ating Lakas at Sandigan, Epsumion Multipurpose Cooperative, Ragay Organic Farmers Agriculture Cooperative, Philippine Garden Brotherhood Incorporated, Ragay Naga Transport Service Cooperative, Publasyon PUPRPSI Kahupa Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, Amos Ragay Referees, Caritas Dayo si Sublibmanan, and Ragay Computer Vehicle Tricycle Operators Association.
The Chairman of the Committee on CSOS POs is recognized.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this is the consolidated Committee Report regarding the application for accreditation of the twelve CSDC organization, namely Epsumion Multipurpose Cooperative, Ragay Organic Farmers Multipurpose Reform Cooperative, Philippine Garden Brotherhood Incorporated, or PTPI, Ragay Naga Export Services Cooperative, or NSCO, Contrasyon PUPI, or PISI, Kahupa Tricycle Operators Association, Amos Ragay Referees Incorporated, Caritas Dayo si Sublibmanan, Ragay Computer Vehicle Tricycle Operators Association, Katabangan Nagrayan Reform Cooperative, San Isidro Development Cooperative, or Sideko, Samahan ng Basketball Recreation Pilipinas, SPRP Incorporated, Ragay Innkeeper Association, Karagatan Ating Lakas at Sandigan, or KASO. By this, upon review of the documents affiliated by individual CSO as required under the Agenda Sepulon Number 2025-16, the committee finds compliance with the requirements and criteria of the Civil Society Organization. And upon review, follow the force of the document reviewed and affiliated during the past administration and relevant persons of the local special bodies and the local government of Ragay, particularly in the municipal development council. Recommendation, the committee recommends that the application for accreditation to the following CSD organization as mentioned, that they are yet to be approved and granted and therefore controlled for adoption of the resolution approving and granting accreditation and those CSO in the municipality of Ragay by suspending the house rules of the reading principles. May I therefore reconsider? May I, Mr. Chairman, the committee chairman of the GPOs move for the adoption of the committee report?
There is a motion for adoption of the omnibus motion for the approval of the committee report. Jurisconded, hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the suspension of the house rule, particularly on the previous reports.
There is a motion for suspension of the house rules. Jurisconded, hearing no objection, the house rules suspended.
May I, therefore, Mr. Chairman, move for the adoption of the resolution approving and granting accreditation on the following CSOs, namely Epsumion Multipurpose Cooperative, Ragay Organic Farmers Agriculture Cooperative, Philippine Guardian Brotherhood Incorporated, Ragay Naga Transport Service Cooperative, Publasyon PUPI, Kahupa Tricycle Operators and Drivers Association, Amos Ragay Referees Incorporated, Karitas Dayo si Soblibmanan, Ragay Computer Vehicle Tricycle Operators Association, Katabangan Agri-Reform Cooperative, San Isidro Development Cooperative, Samahan ng Basketball Referees ang Pilipinas, Ragay Elite Referees Association, Karagatan Ating Lakas at Sandigan. That's all, Mr. Chairman.
There is a motion for the approval of the resolution approving the application of the of the twelve, twelve CSOs. In a second, jurisconded, hearing no objection, the resolution granting the approval of the application of the twelve CSOs is approved. Next.
Next is a committee report on finance and appropriations for SK annual budget CY 2025 of Barangay San Rafael, Barangay San Rafael, Binahan Proper, and Barangay Inandawa.
The Chair of the Committee is recognized.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and these August members. So this is committee report on finance and appropriation, SK annual budget of Barangay San Rafael. That the findings that the committee on finance return the SK annual budget of Barangay San Rafael for revision and on September 9, 2025, the sketch revision of the said barangay resubmitted the revised budget in accordance with the committee's recommendation and that upon review, the committee finds the revisions to be in order and respectfully recommend the approval of the revised SK annual budget of Barangay San Rafael for fiscal year 2025. Recommendation, the committee find it meritorious and therefore recommend upon review that the SK annual budget for calendar year 2025 of Barangay San Rafael of this municipality declaring the same to be operative in their entirety. So I move for the
Adoption.
Adoption of this committee report of Barangay San Rafael.
There is a motion for adoption of the committee report. Hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted.
And in the same manner, this is committee report on committee on finance and appropriation. Subject Supplemental Budget 2025 of Barangay Binahan Proper and Supplemental Budget 2025 of Barangay Inandawa. Findings, the committee on finance and appropriations in its review of the above cited supplemental budget of 2025 of Barangay Binahan Proper and Inandawa had shown substantive compliance and rules and regulations concerning budgets and therefore operative in its entirety of its date of approval. So recommendation, the committee find it meritorious and therefore recommends upon review that the supplemental budget 2025 of Barangay Binahan Proper and Inandawa of this municipality declaring the same to be operative in its entirety. So I therefore recommend for the adoption of the committee report.
There is a motion for adoption of the committee report. Hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Next, Madam Secretary.
Next is a committee report on Committee on Laws and Review for Barangay Ordinance Number 7 Series of 2025 of Barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior, an ordinance imposing a penalty of 1,000 pesos for dumping garbage in unauthorized and non-designated areas within Barangay GRS Camarinesur.
The, yeah, the Chair of the Committee is recognized.
Committee Report, Committee on Laws and Review. Subject, a barangay ordinance number seven series of 2025 of barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior, an ordinance imposing a penalty of 1,000 pesos for dumping garbage in unauthorized or non-designated areas within barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior Ragay Camarinesur. Findings, the committee upon review of the above-subject ordinance finds that it was enacted by the concerned barangays in accord in accordance with Republic Act Number 9003, other was known as the Solid Waste Management Act of 2000 and Section 16 of RA 7160 or the Local Government Code of 1991. However, under Section Number 3, penalty thereof imposing 1,000 pesos fine for the first time on individual commits violation is somehow stringent. Recommendation, based on the above findings, the committee recommends to consider the following fines corresponding to the number of offenses. First offense 500, second offense 700, and third offense is 1,000. Accordingly, copy of the said ordinance shall be returned to the concerned barangay for revision and after which the same shall be submitted to this level for its final approval.
There is. So, for the adoption of the committee report. Yeah, he adopt more.
Motion for the adoption.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Jurisconded, hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Thank you. Next.
Next is for barangay ordinance number 05 Series of 2025 of barangay GRS, an ordinance prohibiting minors from driving motorcycles within the jurisdiction of barangay GRS Ragay Camarinesur and providing penalties therefore.
The Chair of the Committee is recognized.
Committee Report, subject barangay ordinance number 05 Series of 2025 barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior, an ordinance prohibiting minors from driving motorcycle within jurisdiction of barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior Ragay Camarinesur and providing penalties therefore. Findings, the committee upon review of the above-subject ordinance find that it was enacted by concern barangay within the purview of Republic Act Number 4136 or the Land Transportation and Traffic Code, which prohibited license and underage driving local ordinance are essential to enforce this law at the committee level and enable barangay authorities to take immediate action. Moreover, the same was enacted on ordinance within Section 391, A1 and 14. However, Section 3 penalties, particularly on the second offense impoundment of motorcycle for not less than seven days and mandatory seminar for both of minor and parents and guardians at the barangay hall are beyond the power duties in function of the Sangguneang barangay. On the third, on the third succeeding of office offense, impoundment of the motorcycle for the 30 days and referral to this WD office for appropriate intervention are also not within the ambit of Section 391 Republic Act 7160. Recommendation, based on the above findings, the committee recommend the copy of the subject ordinance shall be returned to the concerned barangay for necessary revision to the further seek for the sort of clarification of guidance from the appropriate office agencies such as the Land Transportation Office of Municipal Social Welfare and Development Office as the penalties enumerated under Section, uh, second and third offense of Section 3.4. After which the same shall submit to the this level for the final approval. Mr. Chair, I move for the adoption of the committee report.
There is a motion for adoption of the committee report. Jurisconded, hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Next.
Next is another report for barangay ordinance number six Series of 2025 of barangay GRS, an ordinance imposing the anti-open muffler policy in barangay GRS.
The Chair of the Committee is recognized.
Subject barangay ordinance number 06 Series of 2025 of barangay GRS entitled an ordinance imposing the anti-open muffler policy in barangay Godofredo Reyes Senior. Findings, the committee upon review of the above-subject ordinance finds that it was enacted by the concerned barangay pursuant to Section 16 of RA 7160 or the Local Government Code of 1991, which empowers barangay to enact measures to protect its inhabitants from nuisance including noise pollution. Open mufflers are not only illegal under national transport laws, but they are, they also pose risk to public safety due to possible engine modifications that may reduce motorcycle stability or increase speed dangerously. Moreover, the same was enacted in accordance with Section 391. However, Section 5 regarding penalties, particularly on the second offense and third and succeeding offenses, temporary confiscation of the motorcycle for not less than 15 days and confiscation of the motorcycle for 30 days and referral to the PNP or LTO for further legal action respectively are beyond the powers duties and function expressly granted to the Sangguneang barangay. Recommendation, based on the above findings, the committee recommends that copy of the subject ordinance should be returned to the concerned barangay for unnecessary revision and to further seek some sort of clarification and guidance from the Land Transportation Office as to the validity of the penalties enumerated under second and third and succeeding offenses of Section 5.7. After which the same should be resubmitted to this level for its final approval. Mr. Chairman, I move for the adoption of this committee report.
There is a motion for the adoption of the committee report. Jurisconded. Hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Next, Madam Secretary.
Next, a joint committee report, Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform, Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountability for the letter from the local chief executive request for an authorization for the LCE to enter into and sign a memorandum of agreement on behalf of the LCE or the local government unit of Ragay on the implementation of Gulayansabayan project of the Department of Agrarian High Value Craft Development Program per Memorandum Circular Number 16 Series of 2025.
Mr. Chairman. Committee is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, joint committee report, Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform, Committee on Good Government, Public Ethics and Accountability, September 4, 2025. Subject, letter from local chief executive request for authorization of the local chief executive to enter into and sign a memorandum agreement on behalf of the local government unit of Ragay on the implementation of Gulayansabayan project of the Department of Agriculture High Value Craft per Memorandum Circular Number 16 Series of 2025. Findings, the project offers significant potential for food security, livelihood improvement in community participation. However, ambiguities in the MWA provision may hinder smooth implementation, particularly regarding the greenhouse frame and long-term sustainability in the LGU's role must remain administrative and technical as major instructor course were not explicitly included in agreement. Recommendation, request for the Department of Agriculture to provide a revise of clarified MWA, clearly deepening the duties and responsibilities of each party, particularly concerning the greenhouse frame. Conduct another committee hearing with the DA representative to settle issues raised, encourage the cooperative to prepare price quotation for greenhouse requirement to guide future decision. Explore expansion of planting areas beyond 200 square meter and support replication of the project in the barangay in school and ensure that the project implementation aligns with the municipality development goals on agriculture, livelihood and food security. The Committee on Agriculture and Agrarian Reform recognize the importance of the Gulayansabayan project and support implementation in the municipality of Ragay. However, do existing gaps in, uh, in the MWA, the committee strongly recommends clarification and revision from the DA to ensure proper execution and stability of the program.
What is the motion of the honorable Chair of the Committee?
Mr. Chairman, motion for the adoption of the joint committee reports.
There is a motion for adoption of the committee report. Jurisconded, hearing no objection, the committee report is adopted. Joint committee report is adopted.
Next is for the announcements.
Announcement. Next session will be on 22 September, same time. Anyone, any committee chair, who has a announcement, you may so proceed. The Chair of the Committee. Sino po ang may announcement na committee chair, who is it? Counselor Sandagon is recognized.
Mr. Chairman, joint committee meeting today at 2 o'clock. Committee on Agriculture, Committee on Good Governance and Public Ethics with the Regional DA po papunta dito, 2 o'clock. Ngayon po, alas 2. Darating po sila at dinan. Thank you po.
Noted. Southeast. Counselor Linaw is recognized. Doc Linaw is recognized.
Health and Good Government today after session and then Finance and Appro and Good Government this morning after session. Thank you. Regarding the purchase of vehicles at sa kayang mawa ng RDH at LGU for the waste disposal. Thank you.
I suggest that it be done after the meeting.
Yung nga, after the meeting there, babalik tayo. So together with Mamalyn Senya. Thank you.
Noted. The Counselor said is recognized.
Announcement po, committee meeting by the Committee on Fisheries and Aquatic Resources regarding the manifesto of the fishermen from Lower Omon and also the proposed resolution requesting for the establishment of a Philippine Coast Guard Station at the vicinity of Ragay Bay, Lower Omon, this afternoon po.
Time?
Uh, 3 o'clock, 3 o'clock.
Noted. Any more announcement? Counselor Arros is recognized.
Ah, Mr. Chair, ano, iniimbita ko po ang lahat ng ano, ano, 'yung membro po ng committee trade and commerce and industry. I re-announce ko na lang sa next session kasi may imbitado ditong DTI. Ano, i-re-announce ko na lang sa sumig na session. Paki-imbitan na lang si Mamalyn tsaka si ano.
So, kailan ang ano mo, committee meeting? Next session. Any more announcements? Counselor Sandagon, huh? There is a motion for the adjournment of the session. Hearing no objection, the session is adjourned. Oh, oh, Mayor's office.